It is six o'clock. It's time to call the Sherwood City Council meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember McMahon if he would lead us in prayer tonight.
Sure, let's pray together. Father, thank you tonight for your guidance in our lives. We thank you so much for the privilege of being here and doing the things that you've called us all to do. I thank you for the opportunity to serve, and I thank you, Father, for these city council members and our mayor as we do our best to lead this city. We ask you for your godly wisdom in our lives to do that. We pray tonight, Father, that you will lead in God's in our thoughts and our actions. May everything we do bring glory to you, and may we pray, Father, for our police officers, our firefighters, our military, and those whose lives are on the line daily. Thank you for guiding us, thank you for your love in our lives, in Jesus' name, amen.
Call the road police.
Brooks?
Here.
Harmon?
Here.
Lilly?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
Aye.
Here.
Keplinger?
Here.
Sanders?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
You have in your packets February 2018 financials. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none?
The next item on the agenda is the waiver of the reading requirement. Councilmember Harmon has asked that we not waive the reading requirement tonight in view that there are several items that are somewhat meaty and perhaps should be passed to the next meeting for further study. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You need a second on that?
No. No, we'll just go on and just do three readings on everything.
Next item on the agenda is Parks and Recreation presentation.
Mayor Young and Council, thank you for taking some time. I'd like to recognize a couple of our men who work for us. They've worked for us for a total of somewhere in the neighborhood of 32 years between them, okay? They've got a lot of experience with us. They run our after-school program for our children, our summer day camp program as well, and our youth basketball. And that's what we're here tonight about, is the youth basketball. The Kids Directory has voted them best choice for youth basketball in this area. So I'd like to say thank you to these two guys. They've done a wonderful job. They've seen over 200 registrants each year for the past several years. They handle all conflicts very well, like we ever had any. Now, they do a very good job of it. Publicly, I'd like to say thank you. We've told them this privately. We have Blake Callaway here, he's our program coordinator, and Tommy Smith is our assistant program coordinator. Let's hear it for those guys right now.
Committees Indoor Commissions, Advertising Promotion Commission. We did meet, and we will have an ordinance for you to consider. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes, except for this ordinance? Does anyone have any other questions on the minutes that are in the packet? If not, we will meet as scheduled next Wednesday. Our meeting place will change. We will be meeting at Sherwood Forest next Wednesday. And before we do the ordinance, I'd like to call Sunny Jansen, our Parks and Rec Director up here, to talk about this. But we will be meeting at Sherwood Forest next Wednesday instead of the Bill Harmon Rec Center.
I'd like to invite the council and the general public to come to our groundbreaking for the splash pad, which will be April the 4th at 3:00. Proceeding those ceremonies, then we'll have our regular A&amp;P meeting in the building. Please come out, we'll have a gold shovel for you councilmembers and a few other members. The ones that live in building history on the splash pad, this splash pad is about 8,000 square feet. There's not another one in the state of Arkansas anywhere that looks like it. It's going to be something that you guys in the city of Sherwood would be very proud of. It's up there next to the Farmers Market pavement at Sherwood Forest. Love to see you all there. If you have a question, I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have about the splash pad. That's the first spending of our big monies for the bonds. The next two projects are the soccer and the tennis, and those are coming into fruition pretty quick. Those bids will be coming out, and you're going to be seeing stuff in your packets about soccer and the tennis. So that's the bond we passed back in 2000, later part of 2016, got the money in late 2017. So been a long haul, but it's been a good venture for us, and I think you'd be proud of the product we've done.
Thank you. Do you have a question? No?
An ordinance amending a portion of ordinance 1996 regarding seasonal vendors and for other purposes, first reading of the ordinance.
It's the Chair of A&amp;P, would you, do you mind maybe? I was actually going to defer to Councilmember Keplinger because this is actually his ordinance. All I do want to say is this ordinance came out of much discussion at our Advertising Promotions Commission meeting. All the commissioners, there was a lot of discussion on this, so go ahead.
Previously, it was a, for seasonal vendor, it was a five-month period. Basically, all this ordinance is, is to extend it one month to a six-month period instead of a five-month period. It gives the vendors more of an opportunity, because we have longer sales periods here in Arkansas, so that's all.
This month's going to be a perfect example, because the weather's already turned off nice.
Yeah, so that's what it's all about. I recommend a good vote.
This is recommended overall? It was recommended by the commissioners from the A&amp;P Commission, and this may be just a one-year fix, because we're looking at overhauling this whole ordinance on seasonal vendors, mobile vendors, and it's another Alderman-Keplinger project there, so. But this will at least take care of the seasonal vendors for this year, and it's usually the snow cone people that really would like to stay open even longer than six months if they could, but anyway. It did come as a please pass this out of the commission.
Mayor? If I may, we did actually have somebody come in to apply for this today, and he was very excited to hear that this might pass.
Good.
Make a motion, approve the ordinance.
No, 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 no. Make a motion, move it to the second reading.
You gotta do the second and the third.
Spoiled you guys. So is there a motion to go to the second reading?
Yes.
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance amending a portion of ordinance 1996 regarding seasonal vendors and for other purposes, second reading of the ordinance.
May we suspend the rules and place it on the third reading? Second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance amending a portion of ordinance 1996 regarding seasonal vendors and for other purposes, that's the third reading of the ordinance.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there emergency clause on that?
No emergency.
No.
Civil Service Commission, Parks and Recreation Committee.
The minutes of our March 12th meeting are in your packet. We had an excellent meeting. Darren and Sunny updated us on the splash pad and on the other projects that are being considered under the bond money, being constructed under the bond money, tennis complex, soccer complex, and also gave us a preview of the Sherwood promotion video, which was very impressive. If you have any questions on the minutes, we'll entertain them. Otherwise, the next Park Rec meeting would be scheduled for April 9th at 6:00 p.m. at the Bill Harmon Rec Center.
I apologize. Did the golf cart age change? I know it was a discussion.
It's being presently considered. They're researching the possibility of reducing the driving age on golf carts to 16, but no decision has been made.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Personnel Committee?
We did meet. Your minutes are in your packet there, if you have any questions. If not, we'll meet April 5th. We're scheduled to meet April 5th at the Bill Harmon Rec Center at 5:30.
Very good, thank you. Planning Commission?
Councilmembers, the next four items are issue, or rather, business from the Planning Commission. Items A and D, we've been working literally right up to this meeting to get language changed to be more appropriate for what we're trying to accomplish on these. And so the ordinance that actually appeared in your packet, we're asking that we amend to the ordinance that was sent out later today. It's very similar in nature, it just has an attachment of the regulations as opposed to writing the regulations as an ordinance. But I'd like to ask for an amendment, or rather, a motion to amend item A under Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance amending the existing control of development and subdivision of land code with respect to submission requirements and for other purposes, that's the first reading of the ordinance. Mr. Middleton?
This was all generated when the Board of Directors at the PAGES, the Alaska Area GIS, awarded financial assistance to member cities to either create or update stormwater drainage mapping. Sherwood was pretty much ahead of the curve, because they had pretty much done this completely as of a couple of years ago, and a lot of development hasn't occurred since then, and there's need to update some of that. So PAGES has reserved $20,000 for Sherwood, but they have some requirements. Naturally, when they get all this information on their mapping, they're going to put it on their site so that it's available to everybody. I know that staff in public works engineering use that pretty extensively, but what PAGES requires is that they want to know that this data will be maintained and kept current. So it's in our best interest, we virtually give back our membership, is if we get the financial assistance to update our stormwater drainage mapping. And in order to do that, what they require is that we amend our zoning code and our subdivision regulations to require digital mapping. Digital mapping is what they take to insert into their system. It's a good idea anyway, it's something that I think I would have recommended to this council to undertake in the future anyway, but time is of the essence, because the board may not continue doing this after this year. This is a year-by-year sort of commitment, pardon me. The amendments really only do a couple of things. First, it changes the requirement in the preliminary plat for submission of Mylar Inc. and Indianic drawings, 36 by 48, to either require both paper submission and a digital submission for the preliminary plat. It also gives the city engineer, it adds one item in the list of requirements, city engineer may ask for additional information that's not already enumerated. It also commands the final plat process, again, requiring a paper submission and a digital submission. Doesn't change anything else in that whole array of listings, except allowing the city engineer to request additional information if he desires. And finally, it adds a new section for as-built digital mapping, so that whatever was proposed to do, we want to see if that's what's actually on the ground. That's good practice anyway, but that's exactly precisely what PAGES is looking for right there.
Are there any more questions? Anybody have anything that perhaps Mr. Middleton did not clarify or answer?
Move for the, move we?
Well, we haven't read the, he didn't read the ordinance, did you?
I did read it one time.
Move we suspend the rules and place it on second reading. I couldn't remember what the words were.
As amended. As amended, second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
In ordinance amending the existing control of development and subdivision of land code with respect to subdivision requirements and for other purposes, that's the second reading.
May we suspend the rules and place it on third reading? Second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
In ordinance amending the existing control of development and subdivision of land code with respect to submission requirements and for other purposes, that's the third reading.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Keplinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance amending ordinance 729, known as the Sherwood Zoning Regulations with respect to planned unit development zoning, repealing conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, that's the first reading of the ordinance.
This is the first of the ordinances that I think we should discuss if we have questions, but I think should only be read one time tonight, considering everything that it touches on. I have a number of questions and notes on it, Middleton, but I think you and I, and I think you agreed with me tonight, that it probably should only be read one time.
There's a lot of meat in this one, and yes, it deserves due deliberation. I can give you an overview of it. We currently have a planned unit development provision in our zoning code. Generally felt that it was a little restrictive and a little out of date, even though it was adopted in '97, so we agreed that we probably should relook at that. The major differences, and there aren't too many real differences, but the major one is on the minimum size of lot that you can apply for a planned unit development. And maybe I should back up and say the difference between a normal zoning district and a planned unit development. Planned unit development is in fact a zoning classification, but it's almost like an agreed-to zoning classification. A normal zoning district says you can do certain things, and you can't depart from those certain things that you can put in, what uses you can allow, how much coverage you have to have, what your setbacks are, and those sorts of things. It's very restrictive. You either meet it or you don't. A planned unit development says, well, we can waive some of those things. We will give you permission to do things a little bit differently, but in return, we expect something above and beyond for public benefit that we would not normally get from a normal zoning classification. And that's what the planned unit development allows for some creativity that you're not probably going to get in a normal typical zoning district. It's very negotiated, and once it's set by the council, that's it. They cannot depart for it. And the big difference is that when you do a pre-zone in a normal zoning district, you may think you know what the use is going to be when you adopt that zoning, but it can be then used for any purpose that's allowed in that zoning district. I've been testifying in a number of cases on things like that. The planned unit development, a card laid is a card played. What you propose to do is exactly precisely what you've got to do, or it's contrived. Big difference, again, is on the minimum size. The current ordinance requires two acres with a possible waiver of something less, but it says real precisely, it's got to be extraordinary. The new proposal says it can be three acres for a mixed-use or residential proposal, or one acre for commercial or industrial. A smaller lot size is really geared more for infill sorts of projects as opposed to large projects that you might get with the more creative mix of residential and commercial. Yet, the basic criteria for the Planning Commission to approve such a thing is that it has to conform to the underlying zoning. Right now, it says if it's a commercial planned development district, it's got to be a C, I think it's a C1 use. Well, this says it has to conform to whatever the zoning classification under the proposed district is, or it has to comply with the land use plan if it doesn't comply with the zoning, or it has to be consistent and appropriate, and appropriate for surrounding adjacent property. Those are the major criteria for what you would allow to approve that. The residential zoning, residential planned unit development, has to have at least two amenities, and there's a list of them, open space, bike trails, that sort of. That's some of the details you need to look at. And the process is essentially two-part. The first step is to go to the Planning Commission and you get approval for what amounts to a zoning plan. That says, here's what we plan to do. And then that is taken to the city council, you all. And if the Planning Commission approves it, recommends conditional approval, but that's what's sent up to the council, and the council can reject it, accept it, or make a different approval of it. When that's adopted, that's the card laid. The next step is to develop a plan. The first plan has to be specific enough so that you have a real clear idea of what they're going to do with that property. If it isn't clear, you don't approve it. But once it's clear, and we know who's going in there, what kind of use is going, what the coverage is, what the amenities are going to be, and what the public benefit of all that's going to be, then they start working on the development plan. The development plan is where they fill out the details, and there's two parts of that. One is a short form, if it's a single piece of property, it's not going to be subdivided, or the longer term is if it's a parcel that's going to be further subdivided, then it has to comply with subdivision regulation. That's just a little bit more work. But whatever is done in the development plan absolutely positively must conform to the zoning plan that's adopted by the council, and that's all that can be approved. And I think there's reasonable safeguards built in there for both the Planning Commission and the enforcement officers to make sure that that's followed. It even has a provision in there for very, very minor modifications, but that whole section basically says you cannot modify it except for one little instance, and it has a specific clause in there for revocation. If the developer does not do what he promised to do, if it takes, if he hasn't started anything within six months, or he hasn't finished it in two years, it's out, it's over. I think it builds enough flexibility for the city council, the Planning Commission, and developers to maybe do some creative things that might not happen otherwise, and yeah, there's going to be a lot of questions about this.
Yeah, my first one was the question about your, the list you put out there about uses permitted. So going back over those, rather than just underlying zoning being the criteria for determining whether a project can go on the property, it's zoning consistent with the general character of the land use on the city's land use map are substantially similar to and compatible with the adjacent property. Any one of those three.
Yes.
Correct. All right. But then elsewhere, we say that the PUD zoning plan, the Planning Commission, to approve a PUD zoning plan, the Planning Commission shall find that the development is compatible with the city's land use plan. So you can't approve the zoning plan unless it is compatible with the land use plan.
Oops. I mean, inconsistent, that ought to be changed.
Okay. All right. But is, so, all right, so I'm seeing, that is an inconsistency, that wasn't something I misunderstood. That was my biggest question. A zoning plan, would you define a zoning plan for me?
It's a plan that shows enough detail to know what the footprint of the structures or uses are going to be, the percentage of uses that are in the residential, and what kind of residential. There's enough detail that you know what's going in there, and it doesn't require, like detailed engineering drawings and classification and that sort of thing. It's pretty similar to a site plan.
And that comes, that's what comes to us?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. All right, and so those three criteria listed are the criteria actually that we're going to consider when that comes to us?
Yes. Planning Commission has to consider it, and then...
I guess that's why I'm hinging, I'm keying in on them, is because those are going to be very important criteria to this council when, if, when this is adopted, because those are going to be, have to be the criteria we're going to have to consider, and they're more, you know, in the past, we've had zoning has been very black and white for us, and this is going to be a little more gray, I guess you'd say.
There's more judgment call.
There's more judgment.
The one thing that I would expect you to be a little concerned about is whether somebody tries to go this route because they can't get what they want in the traditional zoning, and that's, those criteria that are built in there are try to head that off.
Yeah, I saw, it says PUD provides public benefits that would not be achievable through the normal zoning regulations. So does that mean PUD is only available for a project that is not obtainable through normal zoning?
There really needs to be a higher purpose for having to do it in the first place. Again, if you're just trying to wire around the current zoning requirements, that's not the intent of this, and you probably can sniff that out pretty quick. Again, what was important to think is that there should be some public benefit that you couldn't get otherwise, and if you can't identify that, we shouldn't do it.
Okay. All right. And the rest of my questions, I think I'll just shoot to you in writing, and I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions on that item? An ordinance amending ordinance 729, known as the Sherwood Zoning Regulations with respect to regulating the paving of driveways, repealing conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, first reading of the ordinance.
This is another one I thought, because it affects developments, and was a little meatier, that I thought we might just read one time and then pass it at the next meeting. You want to?
Expound upon that.
Okay. There is an existing ordinance that does most of this, that's ordinance 1564 that was passed in 2001, that requires paving of all driveways. It doesn't say whether it's a short driveway or a long driveway. It's going to pave the entire length of a driveway in this city. The way that ordinance was written, it does not say that it demands a zoning code. So it has been coming to the Board of Adjustment, because some people don't want to pave 400 feet of driveway, and they want a variance, because they don't want to pave 400 feet of driveway. But because the ordinance did not amend the zoning code, the Board of Zoning Adjustment didn't authorize to take it up. So that's part of the reason why this is being offered up. It really, it doesn't change very much of the original ordinance, but what the Board of Adjustment apparently had been getting is quite a few requests for variances, especially on the east side and north side of the city, for very deep lots with long driveways. But that is causing a financial problem, and the truth of the matter is, Board of Zoning Adjustment didn't have authority to deal with it. And if you pass this, they will have authority, but it did not make any sense to us, especially in light of the annexation which has occurred since this was originally adopted, that we're going to have longer driveways, deeper lots in some of the newer areas of the city, and requiring 100% paving of that is a little bit financial burden. So we went round and round about what a decent distance would be, and we finally settled on 100 feet. I kind of think in terms of a football field, 100 feet's a pretty good long distance, that probably covers most residential units. But we felt like there ought to be some cutoff. Beyond that, then maybe we could consider a variation or a variance for some real unusual piece of property, but most properties ought to be able to get it in under 100 feet. And then after 100 feet, no, we don't require you to pave it. There's never really no public purpose in requiring it after that point. The other thing that we discovered kind of late is that there was nothing in the zoning code that defined what the driveway is. And you know what it is, don't you? I know what it is, but it wasn't defined anyplace. And it occurs that there are some people in the city who are parking RVs in their front yard, graveling the road out to the curb, and just calling it a parking path. So we have proposed that you change the definition to be access to the property connecting to the street. So we now have a definition, and the requirements for the surface type and the width and all of that is essentially the same as the current ordinance is.
I think too with the new, it's really becoming popular to have estate-sized lots, and we're getting, we're having more of those come forward.
What kind of?
Estate-sized lots.
Estate-sized.
And there's, one of three acres, it's really becoming common, more so than what it was. So the driveways perhaps will be longer. We've had two just recently, haven't we?
There was one when I first came onboard, and it was pulled, and I don't, I don't know why. The last one was about two months ago, and it got taken off the agenda because we felt the board didn't have authority.
There's someone kind of that needs an answer at some point so they can continue on with the project.
I, I got a look at it on this also, and it, it only really just gives you an option to either having, for under 100 feet, asphalt or concrete. What if a person wanted to use brick?
Well, it's paving.
But it says concrete, four inches thick.
Yeah.
Okay.
City engineer can deviate.
It'd be a lot of brick.
Okay.
As a city engineer may approve alternative methods of construction of permanent driveways.
Yes.
He would probably approve. It probably wouldn't throw out stones and dust, which is the biggest problem why driveways are paved in the first place.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Just read it one time.
Charlie, are you comfortable, you want to go for a second reading? You were going to post a question.
I prefer that we read it one time tonight.
Is this going to have much impact on the property owner?
Should be a relief for them.
I mean, but not passing it is what I meant.
You can pass it.
I'm sorry?
If they don't want to pay 403 feet of driveway.
Is there anybody waiting, is there anybody waiting to pay right this minute?
That's what I need to know.
Okay. With respect to item D, can I have a motion to amend and substitute that, it's the same as we did with item A?
Move.
McManus?
Jimmy, I?
Harmon?
Ah.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eflinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 An ordinance amending the existing zoning code with respect to submission requirements and for other purposes, first reading.
It's the same as A, right?
The same as A. The only real difference is that this applies to site plans. That's the only place where there would be some approval in place that, that might require digital rendering. So there's a, it requires submission of digital and paper for the site plan submission, and a digital for as bills.
Move suspend the rules and place the ordinance on second reading?
Second.
McManus?
Aye.
Harmon?
Ah.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eflinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 An ordinance amending the existing zoning code with respect to submission requirements and for other purposes, second reading.
May we suspend the rules and place it on third reading?
McManus?
Aye.
Harmon?
Ah.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eflinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance amending the existing zoning code with respect to submission requirements and for other purposes, third reading.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
McManus?
Aye.
Harmon?
Ah.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eflinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, senior citizens committee, sewer committee. Richard is going to come forward, I believe.
A resolution agreeing to the terms of a consent administrative order, CAO, with the Arkansas Pollution Control and Ecology Commission.
Richard Penn, city engineer, Stephen and mayor, council members. The consent administrative order is not exactly an, an option, it is something that we have to agree with the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality as to what exactly we believe that we should consent to do. This has been negotiated down from $3,400 to $2,550. By accepting this consent administrative order, it will move then to the advertisement period where it has public comment period, and at this next council meeting, we'll bring back to you a proposal, master agreement, and task orders from Chris engineers, so that they will be engaged to move ahead and actually design the improvements that are necessary to keep the actions that led to the CAO, to keep those from happening again.
Did, now, some of the actions that led to the CAO were the ammonia readings and things of that nature out of the Algonkin things, but it also said that one of the violations was the receipt of an application, renewal application on April 6th that was due on March 4th. Was there a reason, some explanation that we were a month late on our renewal application that we know was anything?
I will have to...
We're not sure it was even received.
That's before my time, and I don't know that there was a reason, it simply occurred, but I will be diligent to be sure that does not happen again.
Move for the, we suspend the rules and place the...
No, it's a resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution, move for the option of the resolution.
Second. McManus?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eflinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 Street committee?
A street committee did meet, minutes are in your package. We've had quite a bit of lively discussion at the past few street committee meetings. If anyone has questions, certainly feel free to ask. Our next meeting will be the second Thursday of April at 5:30.
Thanks.
To Harmon Rexner, thank you.
Yes, Richard, come back.
Richard is going to come back and address the next two items. Did you want to go ahead and read the first one?
A resolution authorizing the purchase by the city of Sherwood, certain real property for road expansion and for other purposes.
This item does, it will benefit from further explanation. The road expansion is a subsequent benefit of making this acquisition. The primary reason for the acquisition is this is a repetitively flooded home repetitive loss. And you have been in a program of acquiring repetitive losses for many years now, it's a very good program. It is funded in part by FEMA through the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management. We have the opportunity to benefit from a grant, and that grant is through the, either the flood, it's the flooding mitigation, or through hazard, the HMGP, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, one of those two. And in the HMGP, for instance, 75% of the cost is borne by FEMA through ADEM, 25% would be borne by the city. This property, we've already moved ahead and gotten everything in line, so all you have to do is approve this, we can go ahead and purchase this one, as you've done in the past. And I'll go ahead and say that there are several properties that are already on an application that was filed in 2010 that will be, we will attempt to get funding for those. This is just an example of how long it takes to get the funding to do these acquisitions without the state paying for all the costs. Now, the side benefit of this is, the property is located on Jacksonville-Cato Road, and if we are successful in being able to move ahead with any improvements to that road, this particular property will be out of the way.
Richard, is this $15,000, our 25%, or is this the full purchase price?
That's the 25% as I understand. That's, that is our part, I don't see...
It is our part.
Yeah.
It's our 25%?
Yes.
Okay. So...
About a year, probably.
Acquisition for a purchase price of 20, of $15,000, so it actually should be a purchase price of $60,000 with the $15,000 city matching, is the way that should be worded, shouldn't it, Steve?
Bear with me, I had, I'm still on the front page.
Mayor, how does this affect in terms of budget-wise? Do we have money set aside? I mean, not that it's a worthy project, but just in terms of affecting the budget?
Probably could take it out of joint.
That's what it's called.
Well... That's true, it's not the purchase price, but this is, this is ready to close, and this is all they're looking for, closing from us. So I'm, I'm wondering if we change that number, that might be, cause some confusion if closing agents are asking me for this resolution, like they need it to get this...
They weren't worded this way, that's fine. I just want to make sure it's clear, it needs to be clear somewhere in our records that this $15,000 is not buying a piece of property for $15,000, we're buying, we're allocating $15,000, it's 25% back.
The city's magic portion is $15,000.
Why don't we say this, the city of Sherwood hereby approves the acquisition of 8307 Jacksonville-Cato Road from Patty Carroll for the city's contribution of $15,000 toward the purchase price, something to that effect.
I move for such an amendment.
Second.
McManus?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eflinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 A resolution authorizing the purchase by the city of Sherwood, certain real property for road expansion and for other purposes, as amended.
Move for the adoption, the resolution as amended.
Second.
McManus?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Lilly?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eflinger?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
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 A resolution approving the proposed contract for remodeling of the old Amy Sanders Library building.
Again, this is something that would benefit from further explanation. You're aware that the new Amy Sanders Library is open, the old one that's about 650 feet away from where we are right now is available, in order to use that building for a new purpose. As your resolution states, the second, whereas the anticipated uses of the old library building will require significant upgrades and remodeling, those are two different things. Upgrades are requirements to use that building in a, in a new way and to continue to use it to meet code requirements. The remodeling is a combination of beneficial and required in order to make that building serve the purpose for which it is intended. At this time, we are foreseeing that the planning and permits and engineering department will move over there as well as some courts departments. Those are relatively different destinations for the public when they come to the city to take care of their business. So you've got economic development pretty much on our, on the planning side of things, and you have some sort of decision-making or responses to decision-making on the other side. So it would be important from the types of documents that are held with the courts folks and with planning that there be some separation, physical separation in the building, so that people actually know, one side does this, one side does the other. There's also considerations of the firewall, but we're not absolutely sure of what we will have to build yet because we have not gotten into any design work. What you have before you is a proposal from Williams and Dean Architects, and what you, we are asking you to vote on with this resolution is to accept the contract for architectural services, be able to define what we need to do, and come back with proposals, and we will work our way into this toward the budget that they have suggested here, which is quite a large amount of money. However, that is only a rough number at this time. They have not put detailed work into this because they're not being compensated for this yet.
That's kind of in a dream world, so...
Right.
Can you give us some more information in terms of, you know, what will go into those areas that are coming out of? And then also, if you could address what we are basically looking at approving in terms of initial cost? And once again, do we, where does that money come from?
I don't know what the initial cost will be to bring it up to the upgrades.
That's not what I mean. I mean, like, this is just like making a contract between us and the architects.
That's correct.
Right? So what is not the final cost on projects, because we have no way of knowing that, what is the initial cost of just doing this?
$64,000.
Right. This, this $64,500 will cover the total amount that they expect to be paid for the remodel. When, and we, then they'll be paid on, on draws, or they'll be paid hourly, or however they bill us based on their professional fees schedule that's also included. So we won't be moving ahead to write them a, some check for 64.5. We'll be working our way through this, and as we get to the point where we know that we have to have a certain amount of money for ex, for upgrades, we can hold at that point and bring it back to you. I would like to move ahead as fast as possible because the quicker we can move ahead, the better we can utilize this space, and we, in planning and permits, would greatly benefit from a little, little extra room.
I was shocked at three quarters of a million dollar estimate.
You're not the only one.
Yep.
And once again, what's, okay, so engineering permits and planning is going to move out, what will go in there, in that space?
That space.
Your services.
Right.
And they are currently, they are currently upstairs, and that was never designed for office space, that is a service elevator that you could access. It's not, it was never really intended to be occupied. So they will be coming from downstairs, there'll be storage up there, and they will be moving over into the planning permit. And then are we, Hot Chex is moving out of their building? And the plan for that building then?
There is several possibilities. It's, some have thought perhaps we should sell it, but of course, we're nowhere near doing anything like that. There's been a little bit of discussion, perhaps MEMS might be interested in locating over there. Those are just a couple of storage, and there's, there's several, you know, options that I, I think MEMS, I know they're looking for a little bit more centrally located.
We need something that's more centrally located, it's not in a good location right now. And I think there could be other opportunities, I did talk to the mayor about this today, other opportunities for that building, that it may come down to the point, is it worth saving that building because that building is in a lot of need of repair also? So it, I don't know that there's been anything decided as far as...
Absolutely not. And a little bit of exception of that building is the parking that we utilize in the back is really not our property. So it's not as large a parcel as some would believe.
And then budget-wise, where's the...
It would have to come out of reserves. I, I got one question on the, we chose Williams and Dean Architects.
That's, that was my, yeah, that's a good question.
So we followed the state procedures for requests for qualifications, we advertised that in the paper, we received seven statements of qualifications. I and our chief building official, we went through those and made a selection, ranking them, and between the two of us, Williams and Dean was the one that came to the top for us to negotiate with first. So if this does not meet with your approval, and it's for us to go to another firm and try to shop this, it's not appropriate to shop professional fees, that's the purpose for the RFQ process. Nevertheless, if we cannot negotiate with Williams and Dean to find something more appealing to you at this time, we could go to another firm. However, I would give Williams and Dean an opportunity to come back with a different fee if they think that's appropriate. Personally, I think that approving up to this amount of 64.5 leaves us room to proceed with them and get some information back to you, which is concrete and better defined, and has actual budget costs that are dependable costs. Seems awful pricey to me.
Yeah, I was going to say, 64.5, I was thinking $100,000 renovation.
You're not the only one that was surprised.
I mean, I think the total cost of $100,000.
If we make decisions at, at budget time, and we know that we're going to have a large item that's going to be coming down, and we have no knowledge about this, that can affect decisions we make when we're doing, working on the budget. I would just appreciate in the future that, I mean, we, we clearly knew that we wanted to remodel this, we've known this for some time. So I would just ask in the future, we have that information so we can perhaps make better, wiser decisions when it comes to approving budgets and how we allocate money at budget time, so we don't have to... when it comes to approving budgets and how we allocate money at budget time. So we don't have to go into reserves.
The sixty-four five doesn't, doesn't offend me as much as a three quarters of a million.
I think three forty thousand.
They, um, and like, and like, and I understand what you're saying. What we're, what we would be approving is up to sixty-four five. It's not like we're, we're, we're committing to pay them sixty-four five. We're committing to pay them up to sixty-four five if we continue with the contract with them and continue to do the work. But if they send us, bring us a plan and, and we don't like the plan, then we're not committed to adopt the plan. Then we can move on to somebody else at that point, I say, right?
That's correct.
So we can say, Williams and Dean, and then bring us a more detailed plan and a more detailed proposal of what it's going to cost and see what it looks like at that point. And then if we don't like it, we can say, you know, Richard, we really, you know, we really are not comfortable with, with Williams and Dean. Let's look at somebody else and let's, let's see if we can get these numbers down because it's just not going to fit for our budget.
Are we obligated to pay them that amount though?
No, we're not obligated to pay them sixty-four five. We're obligated to pay them, just like a lawyer. You're obligated to pay an hourly fee, whatever the, where the work they've done, just like a lawyer. But they're saying that they're capping it at sixty-four five. They're saying they'll do the whole project for sixty-four five. They're capping it at sixty-four five.
How many stages is this going to go through? The, the draft of a plan for you and then what's that, how does that work out?
I actually have not given that a lot of thought as to how many steps are involved. We know that there's probably two phases that would be practical. One would be for the interior and any absolute required exterior, uh, modifications just because of the structure, just to make it, uh, to make it solid. The second phase would be for parking and to improve that. So that is, you know, the parking portion of this is something that could hold until, uh, a later time. But for interior, you know, modifications, there's some structural modifications that need to be made relative to fire code, uh, such as we have to have some more exit doors. And that structures a brick structure. So you cut through brick. It's not as easy as just, you know, knocking a hole in the wall and framing it out. It's a little more involved than that. Uh, and also to make this pleasing to you. And so you'll have a product at the end of the day. It's something you can continue to be proud of as you have this building for many years. It would, it would be better to at least have renderings and plans of what we propose.
And the building's almost 30 years old. What he's talking about the upgrades is, is the same standards that we've approved that we would acquire anybody else to come in if they were going to rehab the building and, and change the uses of it. We had no idea it was going to cost this kind of money. And I don't think, that's, that's the Cadillac version, which we're not going to have. That's the, that's, that's the dream. I think what he's.
As I understand it, this is the dream. This is, uh, architecturally.
We're going to live in reality, which is not going to be that kind of money.
The way I'm reading this, I mean, i- if we approve this resolution, we're, we're approving sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars towards, uh, Williams and Dean to, you know, perform the architectural engineering, you know, work for that building. So, I mean, you know, I'm not seeing anything in here that says, you know, there, there's, there's a scheduled, you know, period for design that's going to cost 10,000 if we move forward. There's another, you know, six, and then we, we work our way up. I'm not seeing anything in here that indicates that at all.
Uh, in the fee proposal itself, item one fee under schedule, they have proposed that on April 1st next week, they would begin the schematic design. And schematic would be, uh, identifying things that absolutely must be changed and the extent of that change and coming up with a framework, a drawing for what that would be. Now, once we agree that those are things that must be done, this June 1st, construction permit documents, sometime between April 1 and June 1, construction permit documents, that's the bulk of the work for the fees, uh, that would be paid here. And then the bidding and permitting, those are all items that, it's sort of like the engineering projects, which are the 30, 60, 90 portion. So this would be more like getting a 30% uh, plan back so that we know more accurately what we're looking at for a given amount of work, what's that going to cost? At least we'll have a better idea of it.
Excuse me. I also understand if we approve this, uh, looking down here on the, uh, additional parking space, another architectural fee of ninety-four hundred dollars. Is that included in this proposal that we would approve that also?
Looking at how the resolution is written.
This is on the, just what you just got through reading, schedule B, the right underneath that.
Right. But in your, in your resolution, it's, uh.
Because it, it breaks it apart. You've got architectural engineering fee of the sixty-four five. And then further down, what he said in the resolution. I know, but in, in here, it looks like that would be an additional fee.
Be included in.
Otherwise it would say included in.
Right. And, and those are separated for that reason. It's more of the phase one, phase two part of it. But like I said, it does not have to be done. That part does not have to be done. We know that this is an amount that is not, uh, just to use a term I'm familiar with, it's not sitting well with you. So as we can, can say that this is not an amount that is appealing to you, we're going to have to come back in here with something that's carved up quite a bit and get it back down to basic requirements. And that's what we need the architect to define for us. And they need some fee.
I think we, I think we need to lower the cap.
I would say they need to sharpen their pencil a little bit. Again, that's just not sitting well.
Well, I mean, the, the point is we can't like, I mean, it's, it's great to sit there and go, well, up two. But the reality is it could, yeah, we could, it looks like we're committed, as Kevin said, to sixty-four thousand five hundred for the first phase. Then we're going to come back and it's almost another, you know, just under 10,000 for the parking or whatever in terms of the second phase. I mean, I don't want us to go, well, it's really not going to be sixty-four thousand five hundred. Well, most likely it will. We just need to either accept that that's pretty much what we're looking at or not. Cause odds are it's going to be more than that. Cause we're going to have to do something about the parking.
This is their request for a fee. If you would like to change that to another number, Mr. Cobb, if that's appropriate to have an amendment to the resolution to change that to another number, say 10,000 rather than sixty-four five, that would allow us to move ahead and would cap it at a lower number. And there is, there are, uh, professional services in the engineering and planning permits budget. And, uh, again, I'm new, so I haven't seen exactly how those are traditionally used. I think we'd need to do another. Yeah, I think we need to. We, we would, it would need to be another resolution. And because the way this is written was in anticipation of accepting this contract. We would need him to come back to us with another contract that just says, here's what we're going to do for $10,000 and line it down.
And maybe one of them could come to the meeting. I mean, for, uh, I, you know, I'm not, uh, he's, he's probably got more money than me. But $64,000, I'd show up at the, at the meeting.
So do you want to table this?
I motion, move to table this resolution.
McMan.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
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 A resolution approving execution of an expense sharing agreement between the city of Sherwood, Arkansas and Central Arkansas Library System.
Mr. Nate, our, Nate Goerter, our director of house is here tonight. The tone has been set.
How sharp is your pencil?
And I, I didn't call Mr. Nate, but I almost did. But I did check with the city of Jacksonville, you know? And you had mentioned, or it was mentioned to me that as this project moved forward with our new library. And I think our previous resolution should not say the old Amy Sanders Library. It should say the previous Amy Sanders Library located at whatever address.
There's nothing old about Amy Sanders.
But, um, I did, you did reach out at one point and said that we were going to revisit. Um, because currently the facility that we've had all this time, we have paid the utilities and, and, and taken care of the lawn. And for probably the last five years, cows, even though it was not in the agreement, you have paid for janitorial services. And so, pardon?
Janitorial.
Janitorial. Janitorial services. But I know once Jacksonville had their new facility, you had a new agreement with them that you would bill back for janitorial, you'd bill back for, um, landscaping. And the size of this lawn here is no comparison to the building that was just vacated. So, and, and the size to clean is a lot different. So.
Building is bigger.
Yeah.
If, if the council would like, and mayor, I'll give you a little bit of background because what we have learned is that we want to pay more than the specific obligation in that 1999 agreement. I was teasing Mr. Cobb that, uh, he must've been about six or seven years old. He's on the original signature of the joint agreement.
I was actually seven.
That put together this system. And the basic framework was that cities who participated had two options. They could either give their library building, their library structure to the system, this joint agreement among the cities. Or they could keep their building and the library would just, the system would just run the library, pay for books and things in it. Jacksonville and Sherwood opted for that option, which was perfectly fine and has worked well, I think, for both places. All mail, other places did it differently. In that agreement, it provides that if you take the Sherwood option, you keep your building and the library system just runs the library, pays for the staff, pays for the books, et cetera. It says that the city, the owner of the building will pay for groundskeeping, custodial work, landscaping, all of that store stuff. And it says everything that's a significant repair, most likely HVAC or something of that order, would be split 80/20 with the landlord, the city paying the 80 and the system paying the 20. What we did in Jacksonville after they built their new library on Main Street there in 2009 was put together a deal that said, look, we know it says that you who own the building take care of the, cleaning it up every night. But it's our experience that we've got people on staff. We can get that done probably cheaper. And it also means if there are complaints, we can deal with them and don't have to go to the city. So let us do that and we'll pay the first $25,000 of all of that sort of groundskeeping, janitorial things that you need to do every day to keep the space looking nice for the community. And then if the, the big ticket items, if you have to face those, those are going to be 80/20 split, the way the group provides. But we'll deviate from that agreement by saying we'll just absorb the first $25,000 because we're in a position to try to keep that cost down and we want it to look good for our staff and for our community. And so that's what we've done over there. And essentially what the, the mayor gets every year from the library for the following year is an invoice that says, here's what it's cost. And I signed it a couple of months ago for Jacksonville. Don't hold me to these numbers precisely. But it said, you know, 56 or $7,000 for all the things that gone on over there. And we absorbed the first 25, so they send us a check for overage, above 25. So what I put together for Mr. Cobb was a letter draft agreement. This is obviously submitted to his fine tune and we can revise it, but it's that basic framework. The system, the library system that you're a part of would pay for, out of its funds, the first $25,000 for groundskeeping and janitorial work, custodial work in the building. And you're right, mayor, this building, uh, is bigger. It's about 14,000 square feet compared to about 8,700, the former space. Uh, and the grounds are going to be a lot bigger. Not all of it, I guess, will be mowed and beaded and trimmed because a lot of it's kind of, uh, wild. But, uh, we know it's going to cost us more, but we're still willing to offer, we'll take the first $25,000. And then all of the expense for those items in and around the building that go above that, the city would take. And I asked our CFO this morning, what have we spent on average for the other buildings? So I could know and share with you tonight. We have spent on average over the last several number of years, whatever, however long we've been doing this, about $11,600 on custodial work there. So we're saying it's going to go up some and we'll take $25,000 of that. And then we're asking the city to take whatever goes above that. Now, that would also be something we ought to adjust for inflation over time, posing the letter to do that. The other big ticket items would be HVAC. We have a Johnson control thing and we've wrestled, tried to do it different ways. The only way we can reliably make sure everything works and if something goes down on a 103 degree day in the summer and you got things going on in your library, get it fixed, is to have some big outfit to deal with it. They have controls to monitor so you don't have some employees running down, running the thermostat down and run up your bills. So they do this. And what we've proposed in this letter is whatever it will cost to add the new library here to that annual contract, we will get Johnson control to monitor it and just hold that in. And that would be a pass through. We would ask the city to reimburse us for maintaining your HVAC equipment. So that's an item that you can pick up. Uh, and then the only other big item, uh, that we're sharing pursuant to that 1999 agreement that Mr. Cobb has owned others is that if there is, and I don't think there will be any type of single brand new building that I think very good about the, uh, construction of and the architects work on. If there's a big ticket item that comes along, a major expense, we would split that 80/20 the way the joint agreement says. And we define in the agreement, proposed agreement, that we won't call anything below $2,500 a major expense to prepare. Anything below that, we'll just accept, uh, and that number would flow over time with cost of living, we'd assess that number. There are a number of other specific things in there that I think essentially reflect what we're already doing. The city, we would ask to pick up the pest control contract. Uh, the city would pay for electricity and utilities for its building. Uh, we would pay for the security monitoring. We've got people who do that. We think we can do that less extensively. So we'll just absorb that. You guys do the fire monitoring, keep up with the fire extinguisher outlet that some of the city fire department can handle. Uh, and we both will ensure it. You guys ensure the structure. We ensure the books and the materials and stuff that are inside the building. So it deals with those kinds of things too. But the big picture is we'll take the first $25,000, those things that in the agreement are supposed to be on the landlord, because we just think it works better that way. And we want to be a good partner and we'll adjust that over time. You guys pick up anything above that. I, I sort of think of it's like a deduct, but we'll pay the first $25,000 and then y'all pick it up from that. And on the other things that are big ticket items, we'll split them 80/20. Does that accurately reflect what I, what we got today?
I think so.
What are we looking at in terms of bottom line overall? So the only other library you have under this plan is Jacksonville. So.
And, and I, if, if you take the numbers, partly because this is a new building, we don't know, uh, their type. But I asked people in our, the operations people, give us what you think, given the size of the building, what our experiences in other places, what you think this might be. And I put that in the letter just for budgeting purposes. I think you're, we, we will, we'll end up, uh, so we'll end up at 25,000 plus change, these other little incidental things. I think your half will be about that. It may be more than that. What I recall, and I don't have the numbers precisely, but when we send Mayor Fletcher an invoice in the first quarter of every year, we've paid 25 and I think they end up sending us a check for 25, 30, 35, so it's about 40, 60. They've got a pretty good size, uh, plot over there too, not as big or acre, but all in use they have to mow. And their building, I think is probably like a little bigger, 14,000 square feet, maybe a level or so.
I got a question on, was it, was this cut and pasted? I mean, did you take this from another doctor? Cause I, cause I know item number eight telecommunications, you're talking about two analog lines for fire.
Is that?
Nobody does that anymore. Everybody uses digital and it's generally a cellular. And it, and it generally ties into with your security monitoring.
Yeah. The operations people told me that had to be in there. The short answer to the question is we took what we had in Jacksonville, but it didn't, wasn't exactly the same and put it in. And then I had the operations people go through and say, what, what things are unique about Sherwood that might be? And I don't, I can't answer that. That's, obviously if we don't need it, then that's, uh, that's to your benefit. Somebody had me put that in there because they thought that was something we might need. If the fire people tell us that they can do it, I mean, I, I don't know the technology, Keplinger about it. We're going to pay for, uh, the telecommunications system because we get a better rate than the city. There, there's a federal subsidy for libraries to get tele. There's a federal subsidy for libraries to get telecommunications rate. It ends up being about an 80% subsidy. So for all of our branches, all of our systems, anything we can put to that, we save money. So we, we're benefiting the patrons over here by paying that because we get it cheaper than you do. But I was told that we have to have some sort of separate analog line. If that turns out not to be true, then that obviously.
That's, that's, they don't do it anymore.
What do we currently pay?
All technology.
What do we, what do we currently pay on the previous Amy Sanders?
We're not receiving any kind of bill from the libraries. I mentioned earlier, we've paid utilities, and our Parks Department has maintained the lawn, Master Garden's done the flower beds, and any building maintenance on it. If HVAC goes out, we take care of it. That's, that's, we've covered all of, there hasn't been a first $25,000.
Right. And as I said, we've only ended up spending about $11,000, $12,000 average over the last several years that we've been paying for the custodial. So this is, we understand it's newer, it's nicer, it's bigger, that it's going to cost us more than the $11,000 or $12,000.
And we were paying the janitorial until we just had so much conflict and some challenges. I think the system kept getting set off, the security system, just some different things. They went ahead and five or six years ago, I can't remember for sure, time moves on, they, they said they would accept that. So we've been paying a lot of these things, but we've been, they've been budgeted, we've been paying them ourselves already, you know?
Right.
It's absorbed through Parks and Rec. And we would have to have mighty little more staff if, I don't know, Parks and Rec is, I don't think they want to take on, because we're still going to have the existing building. So that would be even more increased. But we've been paying for some of this, but we've been paying directly ourselves rather than going through.
And some of that, I think, you can still internally fence because it'll be a part of some, but the, yeah. Our maintenance people will respond to maintenance problems, changing bulbs, changing things that need to be done. Our buildings and grounds people can do that. You know, those are not really significant outlays, won't be anything to you guys. We, that's part of our overhead. But we do have to typically hire outside parties to do the custodial work.
About the window cleaning, there's going to be lots of windows over there.
Yeah, and that's, the reason we put that in there was not to have anybody, not anticipate that'll be an expense. I mean, that's the price of having nicer, open, naturally lit spaces, is got to clean the windows.
Nate, you keep referring back to Jacksonville. Is Jacksonville the only other Cowles Library that has this same, that's operating under this same agreement now? Because I know you've got a newer library in Malmell, they're not.
That's, that's exactly right. Only, the system owns the Malmell Library.
Okay.
The system owns the Perrable Library, the system owns all the Little Rock branches. And, but the city of Jacksonville owns Byllum Branch, or Nixon Branch there in Jackson.
Okay, so that's the reason.
I personally don't have a problem with the $25,000. I don't think that we're going to tap into that too hard first two or three, four years because it's such a new building. Maybe later on, there might be some adjustments that need to be made, but personally, I think that's as fair as we can get with everything you're throwing in and what we're going to be putting in with it, so.
You had an A-plus contractor in Plinco who's built a lot of libraries for us. You had an A-plus architect in Taggart. I think it was well done. You know, the main problem, somebody asked me out there at the opening where most of you worked a couple of weeks ago, the main problem we had on the, on the construction, really, was finding out about the soil being different than what, you know, they take a 10 or 30 boring, it turns out those don't actually reflect the whole building plot. We had to take out some of the soil and bring in some better soil to keep the foundation. So I think those kinds of things are all pointing in the direction of what you're saying. There shouldn't be a lot of expense, we hope.
Right.
But there are certain things, obviously, you've got to keep the windows nice.
Yeah.
You've got bigger, nicer-looking lawn, and we'll, we'll have to take care of it.
Well, based on y'all's estimates in here, it's like $16,000, I guess. So it's 20, what is it? Well, it's $27,350 annually for the, in the estimated contracts, window washing, 9,500 lives. This is not a lot of money. And then the 13,000, the biggest ticket item is the $13,676 for the Johnson Controls.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
No, this shouldn't be a surprise to us, as you're saying, because when we entered into this bond issue to do our library, we knew that we were going to own it and we had to maintain it. So, I mean.
Some of this will be paying of a different, I think, probably now that supplies are ordered and delivered over, then we've had a ticket probably for building. And this is, it's, you're more streamlining.
Well, and we obviously want to keep all these costs down, too, because I got the same issues y'all got about trying to get as much as I can out of it as fair as any. And we don't want the HVAC cost to go up. We don't want the groundskeeping cost to go up. We don't want the custodial to go up. And one of the advantages about this cost-sharing thing is if we're in it with you guys, because we're going to eat the first $25,000. If I don't do a good job, or our people don't do a good job of controlling that cost, then it's coming out of our portion upfront. So we got a big incentive. I think that's another virtue of this practical amendment we're doing to the agreement, which said, all that goes on the landlord and everything else is split 80/20. We think it's better because we're out there every day, Jananne Swindell's here, she's the excellent manager out there, and she's going to be telling people downtown, the system, we've got this problem. I know she'll hold back if there's something we can fix or make work out of. We're going to be doing it because we want to save our money, your money, and the taxpayers' money. It's a collective effort here to save money and get the most out of that building that we can. And I think people are going to applaud you and the good leadership y'all have exhibited by putting that building out there.
I don't think we're, I mean, we shouldn't be shocked.
No.
But we did have a different agreement, so it is something different. Because we have always owned the library, we owned our other building. We paid Mr. Jansen's department mode, and his department maintained a lot of it. But I do realize that this is a new library. We want it to keep, we want it to look nice and keep, we want it to be around forever and be nice as long as we can. And I think that, like you said, if you're streamlining it, that's a good way to do it. I just think that a lot of us were kind of taken aback when we saw some of the prices. And that's where the heartburn is.
Well, and, and those are all things that I'm telling people in the system, tell me what it might be in the most aggressive scenario. So I want you to know, I don't want you to say, well, Nate, you said you'd pay the first $25,000, and it wouldn't be much more than that. Because if it turns out that's only half of it, you know, you need, you need to know that. I don't know what we do about it at this point, because in effect, I guess, y'all can pull it out of the system. I would regret that.
You're not going to prorate the $25,000 for this year, are you? You're going to pay a whole $25,000.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. We, we want to be good partners, y'all have been good partners with the system. I think it's been great for the community for these 20 years that it's been operated. And as I said out here two weeks ago, it is, I believe, as fine a library, not only in our system, but it is as fine a library as there is in the state of Arkansas. It's as fine a public library as there is in the state. So you should be proud of that, and the people in this community support it. I think they will continue to support it by showing up and by applauding you and recognizing that you made a good investment for their children and grandchildren to have a great library. There's no question, we've got a lot of fine libraries, but I tell people, it's as, it's as nice as any of the libraries in the system. And I think, because I'm partial to the system, I think there are, I got a nice library in Perrable, I got a great library in Bentonville, I got a lot of great libraries, but there are not any better libraries, better-looking libraries. And, and the other part of that is, you've got an outstanding set of people out there who show up and work hard every day. And that, you can't have a great library without the people inside it.
It's the pleasure of the council.
Now move for the adoption of the resolution, second.
McMenon.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
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 An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the City of Sherwood and the spouse of a council member concerning the American with Disabilities Act compliant access at the Round Top Station declaring an emergency and further purposes. That is the first reading of the ordinance.
I'll have to say, this is the card, the card, we did this, I did this in reverse because we've been trying to get a bid for six months. And when he finally got a bid and said he could start work, go after it. And then all of a sudden, somebody said, I think the auditors come along, and they were just asking in general, and it was like, oh, we've already started on this. We're just, we're just about done, to be honest with you. So, but we had to get it done, and we had to make an ADA, and then he's going to donate some and set the brick, and that's been, that might have been done today, I think, the brick was actually placed, so. But I'm just going to tell you that.
Since you've finished that, Mayor, I'll move for the adoption.
Now we're going to suspend the rules.
Oh, suspend the rules and do that. Good, yes.
Second.
McMenon.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the City of Sherwood and the spouse of a council member concerning the American with Disabilities Act compliant access at the Round Top Station declaring an emergency and further purposes, second reading.
Now we suspend the rules and place it on the third reading. Second.
McMenon.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the City of Sherwood and the spouse of a council, a council member concerning the American with Disabilities Act compliant access at the Round Top Station declaring an emergency and further purposes, third reading of the ordinance.
Now Beverly.
Adoption of the ordinance.
Now you got to let Beverly do it.
Yeah, I'm second. I'll say, I'm in.
McMenon.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
There is an emergency clause.
McMenon.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Sherwood to utilize federal aid surface transportation program funds.
Short version is, the Onata Bridge has been inspected by the Highway Department. It has got to have some repairs. Apparently, there's joint ownership assumed between Jacksonville and Sherwood. The county has agreed, if funds become available, they've, they've agreed to pay a third of this project when the time comes. But we are applying through Metro Plans to see if there's any help, and that's what this resolution, if those funds do become available, Richard, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, if the funds become available, we already have a resolution in pass and in place, and we can kind of.
That's right, that would move it ahead quicker.
Yeah, this bridge is in, like, really serious.
School buses cannot go across it.
Yeah. So if there's an evacuation that needs to be done in Indian Head, and they need to go out that way, we have a problem. Fire trucks.
Move for adoption, second.
McMenon.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
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 Mayor, that's the agenda.
Okay, is there any old business? New business?
Mayor and members of the council, I received an email today from our bond counsel, Bill Spivey, who is a partner at Wright Lindsey and Jennings. Many of you are aware that City of Sherwood is a, we're signed on with the opioid litigation that has been commenced. And we've signed on with, with.
Numerous.
Most of the municipalities in the city, I mean, in the state, most of the counties in the state. And there was a big rally at the Capitol last Thursday, I believe. Yes. Anyway, our bond counsel and the folks that have been supporting us and will continue to support us in conjunction with the bonds and the sales tax ordinances are Bill Spivey and his team at Wright Lindsey and Jennings. That being said, the litigation section of Wright Lindsey and Jennings approached Mr. Spivey on Friday to advise him that some of the defendants in the, some of the named defendants in the litigation had reached out and were requesting representation by Wright Lindsey and Jennings as well. So they have a potential conflict of interest with respect to taking on the defense of a case that the City of Sherwood is involved in in some form or capacity. However, the city has the ability to waive that conflict with an understanding that bond counsel and his supporting staff will have nothing to do with the defense of the opioid case, and likewise, will get the same type of waiver from the defendants that they're seeking to represent. Now, I hasten to add and point out that Mr. Spivey is not asking you to do this. His partners in the litigation section ask him to reach out and ask if we would consider waiving the conflict of interest so that they can represent the other side. But Bill has advised me, Sherwood is his client, Sherwood will continue to be his client, and if, if the council should decide that they don't want to waive this conflict of interest, then they will go elsewhere and get representation elsewhere. I thought that was important to bring up tonight, to let y'all decide if you have a consensus about how you feel about it one way or another. I will tell you, one time in the past, we have waived a conflict of interest. It was in the North Little Rock Electric case. We had used an attorney early in litigation that was a member of the firm that North Little Rock ended up hiring, and we ended up allowing them to go ahead and do that and waive the conflict. But this is something I felt was compelling enough that it should come to the council, and you guys should tell us what you think.
What does the city attorney think?
Well, I'm very much, I want this opioid case to move forward. I feel like we're in a crisis as a nation. I went to a funeral three weeks ago for somebody that had OD'd. So this is, this is something that really is very concerning to me. That being said, the defendants will retain counsel somewhere. And in my conversations with Mr. Spivey today, he indicated that Sherwood is not the only municipality that they're finding themselves in a conflict with. Virtually every community in the state that has had any kind of bond business done with Friday Eldon and Clark, or with Wright Lindsey and Jennings, they find themselves in the same predicament of bond council conflict as opposed to litigation conflict. So I don't, I don't see a downside either way. It's, it's, it's just how you feel about, they'll build, what they, they'll build a Chinese wall between the litigation section and the bond section. There won't be any sharing of information or, it won't be both sides playing against the middle, I guess what I'm trying to say.
This is not like a criminal case where I say everyone's entitled to a zealous defense-type situation. This is a, the bad guy's looking for the best defense lawyer in town. And Wright Lindsey and Jennings, one of the best defense teams in town. I'll just throw that out there.
What kind, excuse me, what kind of written assurance will we receive? I mean, will it be something presented to the city council?
Sure, let me read it to you.
What kind, excuse me, what kind of written assurance will we receive? I mean, will it be something presented to the city council?
Sure, let me read it to you. This is a waiver of potential conflict of interest. Wright, Lindsey and Jennings has been contacted by McKesson Corp. and Linden Care LLC to represent them in a lawsuit filed by the numerous governmental bodies, including the city of Sherwood, in the Circuit Court of Critten County, Arkansas. Wright, Lindsey and Jennings, through William Spivey, Walter McSpadden and Kirby Maraya, currently represent the city in conjunction with unrelated sales and use tax capital improvement bond election. Wright, Lindsey and Jennings' representation and advice have involved matters that are not related to the subject or the issues of the claim, the opioid claim. Those unrelated, though unrelated, the representation of McKesson Corporation, Linden Care LLC will be adverse to the interest of the city. However, John Williams Spivey III, Walter McSpadden and Kirby Maraya have not been involved in the McKesson Corp. or Linden Care representation and will not at any time in the future have any direct or indirect involvement in the McKesson Corp. or Linden Care LLC representation. Furthermore, to assure their continued availability to you as needed, they will have no access to the Wright, Lindsey and Jennings files concerning the claim, or will lawyers working on the claim have access to new year files? The city is aware of the potential conflict of interest involving Wright, Lindsey and Jennings and the representation of McKesson Corp. and Linden Care LLC in a claim and waives any objection to the potential conflict of interest. Well, Wright, Lindsey and Jennings will obtain similar waivers from McKesson and Linden Care. That's the agreement.
And the waiver would not be effective until you got that similar document from the defendants in the case. There's, it has to be signed by both sides.
I don't have an issue.
I don't either. This is a large law firm, it's not like, you know.
You know, I would hate for us to lose Bill Spivey. I know he's done a lot of work and I know he's worked with you, he's worked with AMP. I would hate to lose that relationship.
I think we've been assured we're not going to...
We're not going to lose a relationship either way.
I know. Either way, but I don't have an issue with him, with the firm.
What do you think, Charlie?
I'm kind of torn. Normally I would say it's not a big deal to waive it, but this, you know, it's like Steve said, it's, you know, they're going to get representation anyway. And, you know, we probably should go ahead and just waive it. Yeah, I'd say we waive it. Go ahead and waive it.
Then one, that would be a form of a motion.
I'll move, we waive the conflict. I'll move, we waive the conflict.
Second.
McMenon.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Lilly.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Keplinger.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there any more new business? In the way of announcements, I received this just last week and I want to commend our city clerk treasurer, Angela Nicholson. She has successfully completed the requirements and education to become a certified Arkansas municipal clerk. That doesn't come easy. That's, that's, that's a process. I've done that. And they're sending, sending out the letter of congratulations that she's taken, you know, that she's taken this accomplishment that all clerks, reporters and treasurers who take their jobs seriously aspire to achieve. So it's something that you work toward. Says she has dedication, skill and ability and they will be, I'm sure Angela has received her notification, but she also will be presented her certificate at the annual June Arkansas Municipal League Conference during the awards banquet. So just want to commend you publicly on your accomplishment. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
In the way of other announcements, the Sherwood Annual Easter Egg Hunt will be this Sunday. It's a new location, Sherwood Sports Complex, two o'clock. You come at two oh five, the eggs will be gone.[1663.13]